Yeah, I started.
In the NASA? Don't know.
It's on my there.
I started it.
Oh, it started the other one?
Yeah, so when you look at the sheriffs, they bought two cars, not one for hundred and four thousand.
So you three done it already?
Then if you give it back to me, I'll.
What did, what were you just saying?
The sheriff bought two cars, not one.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, hundred and four thousand dollars would be pretty steep here.
You have come with you?
I talked in the harbor break. Hey man. Lynn, I talked with your husband.
What?
I talked with your husband at Harbor Break.
Ah.
I, I, I recognize his face, like, I don't remember his name.
He answered that.
Yeah. Six thirty, let's go to get started in the debate.
Let us take this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God. It is full with everything.
Morning, welcome. First thing we're going to do is approve the agenda. No move, can move second and seconded discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries. They're saying on the agenda is for public comments if anybody has anything to speak on other than when we get down to the update from our negotiations with Salt Creek Wind and Next Era, we're going to open it up for comments just before that comment or just before that debate or discussion. And, uh, and we're going to allow people to speak just to that topic, but if anybody wants to speak for any other topic, now would be the time to do that. If anybody has anything else that they wish to speak on, any other agenda items?
I want to ask Bob how many hundred day thing fogs there were a hundred days ago, because they just keep getting rain. He got this ninety to a hundred day thing.
You know, it's marked on, they say ninety days from fog precipitation and he's marking under gallons, sometimes I miss.
We must have had fog every other day, a hundred days ago.
Usually pretty close, sometimes it's off. Pretty good idea.
So a hundred days from the fog.
Not ninety days.
Okay, ninety days from the fog, we just had at least no ice, leave rain, or what will that be, Bob?
Yeah, whatever form of that time of year, yeah. But the old time we say in the American, yeah, one time it's pretty close.
We're gonna have to ask you to take this up out.
Tell you.
Set up with comments.
Here's. I don't know that it's for the benefit of the public.
Acquiring minds, Craig wants to know, don't you, Craig?
He probably. Me into this one.
Give me else. That will close that section above the comments. Uh, engineer road report.
For the.
For the. We gotta, gotta do the minutes.
We didn't, oh, I'm sorry. Discussion is approved seven twenty-one, twenty-five minutes.
Some moved.
Been moved.
Second.
And seconded discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we have to get those to Amy.
I'm looking last week's Mary sound.
She's good, okay.
Well, we don't need it. We're getting after, we just got to fill them.
Morning.
Morning.
Well, I, you had to come out there twice. We'll fill them later.
Section project we have five nights. Cemetery.
Is it one more hour?
This week, what I think you guys need to just get that rocked. Um, so that's the main issue that run into with, we just haven't gotten a rock with, that's why it's been so. Um, and then on H Avenue, um, we just need to finish up the decking for that. That should be your best way of weather planning this week, but, uh, that'll be, that'll be that project finished up. Um, have a truck fall on E forty-four, take care of it and ready. Probably happen during that. And then, yeah. What would that been for that, we're in Desdale, um, we'll be operating that. Um, we're just trying to try to check in background.
Correct. Can you forward us any information that you have from like the advocate, whoever you're thinking about doing?
Yeah, yep, yep, so, um, and then we've been, uh, playing through dust controls, uh, the second applications, um, are, are a test. Depending on the difference, Carrot Tech or Central Island, so. Then butter up utility permits, so.
We saw that.
Yes. TIP has seven, if I'm not mistaken, uh, for the, for the. All those are to put underground, uh, between two points. Because of ITCs, uh, or raising the transition line electricity that they put through there, so things to putting underground in those locations for TIP. Um, you could pick all those to see if they did work for them. Have issues with them being, you know, back explode, um, and didn't see anything. Anyway.
Okay, so we can take motions for the utility permits. We can do them in two separate motions. Anybody has any questions, we can discuss that during discussion, don't you?
I might have lost my past these Tana County, TIP utility for a second.
Okay, so we're moving to second to approve the seventy utility permits for TIP through electrical cooperative, any discussion?
Have you looked at all the, we don't need to dig, we have to do anything like that. Yeah. At thirty of those.
If there are none others, we'll who, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Next, uh, they did that, they did a motion in a second on the utility permit for Iowa Regional Utilities Association.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Move the second to this, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries.
Bad on my way in, um, just some stuff, I've had three calls this morning already, wild roads, I've had two over the weekend. Thing I drove today is muddy. Think you're drained, but there's a rock on it, you just gotta skip. Uh, the ones, I've had a lot of complaints out south, south of Highway thirty, all the way through across the bottom. So it's muddy, I'm right bottom, look at it, we're done here, go ahead. Oh, so I don't know, I guess if we need to, I'd like to see a plan or some type of something that we get a plan together, figure out what we're gonna address all this stuff. We got a pile over.
Yep.
I gotta go play. And, and that's about the three seventy. It's funny.
It rained.
Yeah, I know.
These people gotta realize this, we only have six trucks. Now, I agree, hell, this whole county has six trucks.
Do you have any other, I guess, roads that you aspire or just kind of that, so, general disapproval, yeah, I don't know, this is our guy. Okay, that's six.
Good, thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Discussion on possible action to approve desert recreation liquor license.
I think that, that's just a year leaving for, thank the golf, just not there.
Okay.
Take that motion to approve that?
That's second. The movement seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, the double D rodeo liquor license, discuss and approve, we'll take a motion to do that.
David made the motion.
Yeah. Or, or seconds, discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion on possible action to approve resolution seven twenty-eight, twenty-five, eight to designate voting representatives for the Iowa State Association of Counties. The one that we have, um, didn't have Libby as the community service section, they had to add group, it did. Email and I told her that that up to you.
You skipped one too, let me come back.
I'm sorry. Did it? Oh, I did it. I moved to be a team resolution seven dash twenty-eight dash two thousand forty-five eight. And then a group Libby, uh, if Iowa Community Services Association, right?
I'll second it.
Okay, the movement seconded discussion. All those in favor say aye. I'm sorry, real quick.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Don't like.
Aye.
Nibble.
Aye.
And over.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes, now back up, sorry, we skipped the, uh, discussable, discussion possible action to approve the chairman to sign Ariane internet contract, this is David's.
So Mike, before he resigned, negotiated a very good deal with Ariane. They asked us not to share it with other counties because it's a really good deal. Um, what it does is it provides us with one gig internet service primary with a hundred meg backup, which at one point in time, in, in the future, if you do this, it will eliminate wind stream hiding internet services for us. Uh, there may be an isolated one line somewhere, I think. Um, but other than that, it reduces the, what we're paying right now, uh, doesn't reduce what we're paying, but it increases it two hundred dollars and it provides us with a lot more service and it will be saving us money overall, so, um, don't go bragging how much he saved, it's like thirteen hundred and two bucks, I think it is, I don't have that in front of me. But it's, it's, I think it's thirteen hundred and two dollars, is that what it is, a month?
Pretty much, thirteen oh one and change.
Yeah, so, uh, I make, I would recommend they sign that internet contract. This is for internet, this is not for phones yet, that's.
Say currently, currently we're paying ten seventy-five a month just to Ariane, that's not including what we pay wind stream for their backup. So, yeah, we should like another eight hundred, so in essence, we're what we're saving money for.
It's about six.
So it'll still be with Ariane though, like, we're with them today, just a lower rate.
It'll be totally Ariane, nobody's your backup.
Okay, we were saving that back though.
Backup, two different lines, so if one gets cut, they'll pick up the other way.
Yeah, good. You made the motion?
I did.
I'll second it.
Okay. The motion is to approve the resume, or excuse, motion is to approve the, the OS chairman to sign our internet contract and vote by Turner, second, if I can have all further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carry. Now are we down to update? Negotiating committee. Regarding Salt Creek Wind LLC versus Tama County. David.
Well, public comments first or that first?
Um, I'm not gonna let him. Go ahead.
Uh, this is a motion by the negotiating committee, that would be, uh, Mark and I. As a negotiating, Nate, negotiation committee appointed by the Tama County Board of Supervisors, comprised of supervisor David Turner and chairman Mark Dolan, we respectfully submit the following. Over the past few weeks, we have spent several hours in direct negotiations with representatives of Salt Creek Wind LLC, a subsidiary of Next Era Energy, resolve ongoing legal disputes and clarify the future of the wind energy project in Tama County. Each side appointed two negotiators who worked collaboratively and constructively to reach a resolution. We engaged in detailed discussions, proposed terms and challenged each other's position until it became clear that both sides had reached the limits of compromise. From there, legal counsel for both parties reviewed the draft agreement, exchanged deadlines and refined the language to ensure the final document protected the rights and responsibilities of all involved. Result of that process is a settlement agreement and accompanying resolution now before the board, along with the following supporting documents. Exhibit A, resolution affirming Salt Creek Wind LLC's vested rights and exempting phase one from the January twenty twenty-five moratorium. Exhibit B, withdrawal of revocation petition with prejudice, only withdrawing the county's position, excuse me, petition to rescind the conditional use permit. Exhibit C, joint dismissal with prejudice resulting all claims in the memorandum of the moratorium litigation case number CBCV zero zero eight nine three one between the parties. Disagreement limits the scope of the project to phase one, defined by the sixty-one zoning certificate issued on September sixteen, twenty twenty-four. Confirms that any future phases of the project will be subject to all ordinances in effect at the time of an application, including the current moratorium. Reserves the county's enforcement authority while clarifying administrative proceeding and permit processing. Provides financial benefit to the county, including one point two million in payments from Salt Creek Wind LLC in addition to taxes and infrastructure commitments. Avoids further litigation, which would have been costly and uncertain for all parties. Respects landowner rights by requiring Salt Creek Wind LLC to offer its standard good neighbor agreement to any non-participating landowners located within one half mile of it turbine constructed or to be constructed as part of the project who contact South Creek Wind on or before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Negotiating good faith with any landowner currently party to a good neighbor agreement who wishes to be released from it, provided the agreement is not needed for the development, construction or operation project. Therefore, we move that the Tama County Board of Supervisors approve and authorize execution of the settlement agreement. Resolution, that's exhibit A, withdrawal of revocation petition, exhibit B, and joint dismissal with prejudice, exhibit C, and direct the chairman to sign on behalf of the board. Respectfully submitted, Mark Dolan, chairman, David Turner, supervisor, Tama County Board of Supervisors Negotiation Committee.
Open it up for public comments and then we'll open it up for supervisors, uh, to weigh in one at, one at a time. Um, and we'll, we'll revolve between, um, those who are for, those who are against, go ahead.
Um, Laura Wilson would like to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, uh, Laura Wilson, uh, zoning administrator, for those of you that aren't supervisors. Um, I have a few, uh, concerns, um, that I'd emailed you and I just wanted to reiterate in this setting.
I'm not hearing you, Laura.
Um, can, can you hear me at all? Can, can you hear me at all? Shoot. Um.
Let's take in person comments first or then we'll go back to online? Anybody on in person like to make any comments?
Well, thank you guys for all the time you put into this. It's been quite a journey. You appreciate all the time and effort you put into this. My opinion is that both committees have met. They've got a good agreement, they're holding the grain on things. And it's a workable, workable solution, then past, if it's agreed upon, we both sides, they've got good agreements. And, uh, it looks like a good working relationship in the future. It's going to save the taxpayers, other county a lot of money, but I don't feel the county taxpayers should be paying for this, but they need to wear it on their own. That's their bike, that's my internet, well, or many others. Uh, a lot of people don't come forward. If you get this taken care of in a peaceful manner, you guys are doing, and it's a good agreement between everybody, that that needs to be passed, it's a good recipe to do. Thank you for all your time.
We just want to try again.
Yep.
All right, can you hear me now? Anybody, anybody in the room hear me?
Where's my mom's? Let me check out here too.
I, trying again, can anyone hear me in the room? And I know online can hear me, can anyone hear me in the room?
We can, we can hear you now.
Okay, um, I'm Laura Wilson, the current zoning administrator. I have a few concerns about the wording. Uh, first, in the resolution section, instead of the settlement, it is a little more vague in the resolution than you have determined in the settlement for the, um, for the exception of phase one on the moratorium, uh, versus other possible future phases or other areas of Salt Creek. As you're negotiating with Next Era and Salt Creek Wind LLC, I don't feel that any other uh, phases of Salt Creek that have not been purchased by Next Era should be included in this moratorium. And they should be, uh, reviewed and exempted on their own merits separately of the settlement. Um, as far as the settlement itself goes, in section two F, um, I would just like to mention there, the applications that Next Era or Salt Creek submitted do not currently include any E nine one one addresses for the turbines. And I was planning to get to updating those shortly, but I do want to clarify that I am allowed to make those revisions and still not be in violation of the settlement. Um, for section two H, uh, I am concerned about the wording, um, that, that this is claiming it, they do not need permitting for the LIDAR. Uh, I think it would set, uh, a poor precedence in our county if it is not acknowledged that the approval of the LIDAR is an exemption variance that is outside of the Board of Adjustment Review Process. Um, our ordinance has a section four hundred point three five that defines farm and, um, other uses constituting farm. And then in section five oh four point one, it states, quote, "No building shall be erected or structurally altered, nor shall any building or land be used except for a use permitted in the district in which the building or land is located." All of these turbines are currently located in agricultural districts. Then in section eight hundred, it lists the permitted uses of the agricultural district, none of which include, um, wax structures or accessories. Uh, so I'm concerned if we don't change the wording to, to claim that this is an exemption for non-agricultural use, that you open the door to anyone else either with a conditional use permit business and separate land or even just regular citizens that build something smaller than our hundred twelve, hundred twenty square foot structures that do not require permits. This opens the door to say that they can put whatever they want in those and use those for whatever they want, even while our ordinance in five oh four point one says that it has to be a use for that district. So I, I don't think it would affect Salt Creek Wind LLC if you made this change. It would strictly be protecting the county, uh, against future disputes in that area. Um, under section K, it feels a little overreaching in my interpretation. Um, it says earlier in the settlement that sections two B and, or, and two C, um, where the supervisors have the jurisdiction to enforce ordinances. But this section K could be interpreted that the zoning administrator no longer has the jurisdiction to enforce those future ordinance violations that arise for this project. Uh, per the Iowa code in three three five point nine, it states the administrative officer is authorized to enforce resolutions or ordinances adopted by the Board of Supervisors. In the wording here in K, it puts two of my duties in direct conflict, if I, if I, um, if I enforce the resolution, I could be in violation of our ordinance, and if I enforce our ordinance, I am in violation of our resolution, depending on the situation. I would think since the ordinance is more overreaching for the county, that would take precedence. But you, you guys would be the final say in that, and I would just like that clarified. Um, in section L and M, uh, there's a term where they, they mentioned a ministerial permits that should be issued immediately by both myself or the engineer when stuff comes across. That term of ministerial permits is not listed anywhere in our ordinance or defined in the Iowa code. And I think any permits, whether they're small or large, need to have due diligence with any supporting data. Um, I agree that there should be no undue delay. But the terms of this makes it possible to be interpreted that there's no possibility for review on either my part or the engineers. Um, I would also like to discuss where extensions are not a guarantee in our ordinance. The wording indicates that I have the, um, authority to issue them, but it would be under my discretion. Uh, I know that the settlement states that it would be per our ordinances, but with so little definition in our ordinance right now, I feel that that would still fall back on my discretion. Um, currently with any other citizen, I have been, um, vocal with multiple people that I am not planning to issue extensions past three months at a time. Uh, if Salt Creek Wind would like extensions, they may request those, um, but they would need to come back at three month intervals to, uh, review their status, review their updates, um, and request another extension. We do not currently charge for extensions, so that should not be, um, more of an inconvenience than resending an email and including status updates on their part. Um, and then in conclusion, I'm just asking that you possibly table the settlement and resolution for another week to take a further look at some of the phrasing within and how it may have long-term effects on the county outside of the wind project. I know there's a feeling of urgency to get this pushed through, but I hope that the urgency does not outweigh the need for thoroughness or accuracy. Uh, so please, I hope you take my, um, concerns into consideration and, and possibly hold this off for another week to take a further look, thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Anybody else wish to speak? Yeah, there's time. Okay.
Richard Hart. You both know, so. I have some concerns, and I first want to thank, uh, Mark for sending the you know, and, uh, I appreciate you two guys going ahead and going doing the, uh, uh, but I heard David say something in the agreement, and that is actually Next Era. Same thing. So. Uh, mainly with the fact that even though David had in his, he said earlier that Nextera. Is Salt Creek Wind, it never specifically says that in the area. And, uh, then, uh, also. Is never mentioned in the actual man. So, uh, I have concerns, uh. That, uh. Next era may move on and say, hey, I wasn't mentioning this, and they want to move forward with something. And, uh, so I have huge concerns with them. And, uh, also, uh, what Laura was tweeting about. I'm in the hands of the Board of the Jinxing, and I'm the, uh, the consuming of many of his hands. Not being able to make an agreement. Just because you have something. You have to take due diligence, take your time, and make sure you doctorize and you brush your teeth. Otherwise, down the road, you need to tie up by an agreement that, uh. Basically. Allows Nextera or Salt Creek to do something. That you didn't intend to allow them to do at this point, so. I thank you for your time. Please table this for a whole week. Thank you. Go ahead, Andrew. Go ahead, you got the mic or not?
Um. I just wanted to follow your rules. Um, I agree with Laura, but you're, I looked through this and Eric's out like they need to clean down. And. It really doesn't need to say this is a one-time exception. Otherwise, you're gonna, you're gonna end to a lot of trouble, I believe, several different. Reasons why we should justify the risk of strictly. The light are for salt. And it shouldn't be that hard to put any of these. Exceptions in there, they're just being covered more thoroughly in that legal document, which is. The way it should be, and it doesn't sound like anything taken away from what you've got, it just cleans it up. So, I'm with Richard, Laura, I would strongly encourage you to. Table this until a group came up and. Used more thoroughly for the county. Thanks.
Oh, anymore. I just, uh, the microphone's rolling down. I just think it's a good agreement, I think we need to move forward, put this behind us, and put this all in the best of the county, and just be done with it. That's my opinion. You want this back? Yeah, I'm sorry, maybe music next time if you're okay. Anybody else? There you go.
Thank you.
Good morning, um, just want to say to the board supervisors here and the community. Including our landowners that are participating, uh, everybody in the lead in the mills online. Today marks, um, a significant turning point for Tam and County meeting. As we moved forward together, leaving behind a challenging period. Of litigation to embrace the promising future that this project, Salt Creek Wind. Will bring to Tam and County. We're deeply grateful to the supervisors for their thoughtful consideration. Negotiation throughout and the leadership in reaching this settlement agreement. This resolution allows us to redirect our collective energy from poor rooms to community building. Focusing on the substantial benefits. At least approximately two hundred and seventy-one million dollar infrastructure investment will deliver to the local economy. The Salt Creek Wind project represents more than clean energy generation. It's a partnership with Tam and County that will create lasting value for generations to come. Over the next twenty-five years, this hundred and seventy-five watt renewable energy facility will contribute. Forty-nine million dollars in property taxes, with nearly twenty-eight millions according to Tam and County schools. Sixteen and a half million benefited county services. An additional funding strengthening our colleges, townships, and agricultural extension programs. Beyond the significant tax crunchations, we're committed to being a responsible community partner. During construction, we'll create up to two hundred and fifty local jobs. Long-term jobs while investing in permanent infrastructure improvements, including. High-quality road work that will serve this community long after construction is complete. These enhanced roads represent just one example of how Salt Creek Wind aims to lead Tam and County better than they found it. We recognize that this project has generated passionate discussion. And we respect all perspectives shared throughout this process. Moving forward, we're committed to open communication. In building the strong community relationships that make projects like this successful for everyone involved. Thank you again to the board and supervisor, Richard, the collaboration over continued litigation. We look forward to working together to realize the economic benefits, job creation. And community investments that Salt Creek Wind will bring to Tam and County. The settlement agreement opens the door to a brighter, more prosperous future for the entire city.
Okay.
Thank you, go ahead, Karen.
Hello, I'm Karen. I want to address some of the things that these, I mean, just, I don't know, what did you make?
Just address the board, please.
Okay, um, that were just, uh. The jobs are here now, I, I don't, I guess I have a question about how much jobs are going to be here, two hundred and fifty jobs ongoing. Into the future, I, I don't get that part. Um, I don't know how this could be a twenty-five-year improvement project when. Um, most of these turbines are down within ten years or have to be built back up, which is mega bucks. Um, I don't know how it can be a benefit for the roads when the roads self-destruct from the heavy traffic, um. That's just an ongoing osmosis. I, so I don't know how the road improvement is a permanent thing. And it's very expensive to fix up roads and rebuild roads and. I don't know how the communication can continue when everybody's going to be leaving after this project phase one is, uh, finished until they start in with phase two. So it's really hard to. Communicate with any sort of. Government entity or, um, utility company or a phone company or. And any company, I don't know how we're going to communicate with them, and I don't know who's going to be able to communicate with them, usually you end up on the phone. Or online for hours trying to get a human. And then they're not here anyway. Um, and there's probably a few more points that she made that I should address, but. Basically, I've said this. Many times in the last three and a half years, we need to be very careful what we wish for. Because people generally get what they think they want, and then they can't get rid of it. This is a, this project is a huge concern to me, and I guess I'm speaking because I want to go down on the record as, as. Reiterating that, um, we needed to use a lot of caution with this, I don't regret. Doing that for all these years. I don't regret all the meetings, I don't regret all the time, uh, we needed to do that, and I. I do hope that you'll consider the request made before me to table this for another week. Or however long, however long it takes to look back to this contract. Because this is a permanent, the one thing that is permanent. Is that it's going to be signed, sealed, and delivered, no matter what happens to our. Tax base or property tax base or road base or any other thing that's going on in this county, whether it's a negative or a positive and. Everything that looks good usually isn't because there's no money tree, so it's going to end up costing the county more than what, um. Was indicated, it sounded good, the forty-nine million and the two hundred and seventy-one million dollars, they all sounded good. But other countries and states that are using clean energy, they're having to shut them down because it's not long-lasting, it's destructive. It, it does, it's not reliable. There's so many countries, Spain, France, Germany, Portugal, that the grid has gone down because they are totally. Committed to using green energy, and then they have nothing, they have no energy. So it all sounds good, but there's no money tree, that's what I was taught growing up, but it does sound good for a few people, and we've been saying that for a long time.
Go ahead, Carolyn, since you, since you're there, and then.
I just want a clarification, um, is this just for phase one? Or is this agreement, um, having to do with phase two, which I think it shouldn't?
I'll, I'll speak to that in our comments, because that's been brought up a couple of times, so I'll include that in my comments.
Okay. Because, um, phase two, um. I don't think all the information was there when the Board of Adjustments voted for that in November. And they didn't have all the information because it wasn't there. And so they voted for something that they really didn't know about, and I'm not sure that that should have even been included in, in that, you know? So I, I have very, a lot of concerns about phase two, I just don't think that was done right. And I also have concerns about, you know, Salt Creek, um. Next era, is Burkstrom still involved in this? I've heard his name mentioned, like, do we even know who we're dealing with? That, that's, I have concerns about all of those things, those should be all spelled out, we should know that, it shouldn't just be up in the air. So I just have lots of questions. I think it should wait a week, um, you know, I don't know if you can get it done, I know we got a lot of time, but maybe you guys can figure it out, thank you.
I have, uh, online Patrick C. says, "I too am ready to move on past this. But Laura has concerns about terminology and lack of definitions in the ordinance. I'm with her on tabling this for one week to get those concerns identified and corrected. But I think she's putting too much on herself for this larger project to only extend for three months, I think six months would be more realistic."
Yeah. Anybody else? Bob? Bob was wanting to say something else?
I got it, I'll talk a lot of my friends, Mike. It's from online. Okay. This kind of thing can go back and forth over and over, no matter what project comes into the county, somebody's against it, no matter what it is. We can go back and forth and back and forth for a long time. I think you can come back next week, I mean, that's fine if you need to look at things. That's up to you folks, if they need to look at things and come back next week, that's fine, I can guarantee you. Somebody's not going to be happy with it next week either, so whatever it takes to get through this and get it done. Start saving money, there's a lot of things that people don't know about, they're spouting off. Out in public, things that are absolutely not true at all, the facts aren't correct. People need to have their facts straightened. You guys are taking over and you're, you're. Dealing with each other, both groups, you got your backs together. You guys up here are the ones that are taking care of it, they know what's going on, they're getting all the facts. Everybody needs to give them their comments and their opinions, I agree, if anybody's got a concern. But I'm sure that they're taking care of everything, like I say, it's going to go back and forth and back and forth. No matter what happens, somebody's not going to be happy. My opinion, these guys are doing their job. You guys feel that you need to look at it another week, that, that's entirely up to you, that's a decision. Somebody's not going to be happy no matter what. How long is this going to take? We've been how many years now, back and forth? Need to move on and, uh, get this thing settled, these guys are going to take care of it.
Well, since I spoke about side of two.
Good.
One week. Three and a half years, one week. There was very good things made, especially by your zoning administrator, which I feel she was the person that retired. She's qualified, she's doing a good job, and she's being thorough. So. She hasn't debated anything, and she's just had to clean it up. You guys, you guys are up here because of the county, I want to trust you to make the right decision, I feel you will. I think you did a good job, but the stuff will be caused for cleaning up a few words. And a legal document that's going to go on for years, this is not a video. Thanks.
Hey, there you go, it's from online. Did you want to, did you print that email to?
Yeah, I've got, I've got an email from Linda Moller, I hope I pronounced it right, so I'll go ahead and. I'll read it out loud. Uh, Linda Moller sent this to all of the supervisors. Please share my comments during Monday, uh, support meeting, since I've a lot of people then. I have concerns with some recent comments and online posts made by our supervisors leading up to the development agreement with STW. That's Salt Creek Wind, right? The decision is to go into negotiations again with negative messages, including an online post. While burning money and a comment of being tired of fighting after less than seven months on the board. I believe that negotiations can be more effective coming from a position of strength than being positive. It seems more important to focus on ways in which Salt Creek Wind must comply with current ordinances. Only the old and terrible outdated ordinances will probably apply since new, no new ordinances have been enacted yet. I have a few questions to consider, is agreement with only Nextera or others associated with Salt Creek Wind that need to be in agreement? Does Tam and County have a current decommissioning plan in writing, or is the plan by Salt Creek Wind that Tam and County can't? Does Tama County have a current decommissioning plan in writing or is the plan by Salt Creek Wind that Tama County can't enforce? Specifics should be in writing. In the settlement statement, the moratorium doesn't apply to the project, but shouldn't that specifically state which phases of the project? In the agreement, is Tama County enforcing at least the current ordinances? The county should not sign anything that gives up the right to be sure that Salt Creek Wind is in compliance with all aspects of the ordinances, such as stating which models you can use, hours, setback distances, et cetera. I thought all the details were to be submitted before permission was granted. The agreement should not tie to hands of people that attempt to do their job, such as the zoning administrator, Board of Adjustment, et cetera. These are a few questions to consider before moving forward. I recently heard a comment that at any time you deal with money issues, it's wrong. We need to look at what is the right thing to do because it shouldn't be about whoever had the most money. It's about what is right. And that's from Linda Moller, fucking head first district.
Pick up all the written ones. So yeah. Okay. Then everybody from the public been heard that wishes to be. So we'll move on to supervisor comments. We're starting to go around. Do you have anything to say here? Based off of what comments we've had?
Let's nail speaker. Tom? I don't have anything to say. I thought you know.
Don't make it. You guys?
I always have a lot to say. You guys know that. But is somebody else, you want to go first?
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I think, I guess the prior Board of Supervisors are the reason we're in this situation. I do think, you know, we had a good, a good case. I think this Supreme Court would be a different answer. Obviously, the prior board left us out of money in our general basic fund. We clearly need money to be able to, to go forward as a county. That's definitely disappointing. I think the prior Board of Adjustment, Board of Supervisors definitely did not help us. They did not look at the ordinances. They did not do their due diligence. That's why we're in this situation. So just wanted to bring that up. That's where, there's things in here about lawfully giving a cup. And, you know, there's things like that that I don't agree with. I believe that there was issues. I agree. There were a lot of them on the county side, so I understand that on Salt Creek side. But they obviously now have green ordinances as well, you know, that they began construction on 61 of its sites before December 15th. All they did was driveways, which was a separate permit. That's not related to the building permit. So again, I'm, I'm a ethical person. It's hard for me to agree to things that aren't true. So I wanted to at least state my opinion on at least those points that I disagree with. That it's, I want to make sure that, you know, we're saying accurate information. Either you say, you say what you do. Let's see, you know, I do think that Laura Wilson's points are true. I think, you know, if, if we're negotiating in good faith, I feel like if there's ways that maybe David and Mark know that, but if there's ways that can be compromised, it's not on, let's not go forward with the agreement. I don't think there's any reason to, you know, we're doing this in bad faith. It's just legitimate things that Arizona Administrator, we can't bind her. I don't think, you know, she's the kind of a person, she's going to follow the ordinance. It's kind of like I am again. This is why people get mad at what I've done. I've been an ordinance follower. This is all follow the ordinances from the beginning. I wouldn't be sitting here, right? Or I wouldn't be, wouldn't have been, you know, against the project per se. Well, it's never against the project. It was against not following the rules because I'm a rule follower. So I think I'd like those two's feedback on if we could extend it to fix those zoning things. I feel like those are pretty clerical things. I don't think she's going to intentionally try to stop the project. I mean, that's, that's not what the board wants. I don't think she's going to go against us. It just is there ways that we can at least let her do her job without feeling like, you know, we don't, we don't want to lose her. We, we had no applicants besides Laura. I feel like, like I said, she sometimes follows them too much. And I think it's hard for someone that's ethical to just look the other way and do it for one person and not do it for, for others, right? Because then she's going to have other people that are not wind companies come in and say, oh, well, well, they did it. Can, can I get that too? And that puts her in a hard position. So, so I do, I do understand that side of it. You know, some other things, I guess on the flip side, like I said, I've come to the realization, the project is going to happen. Items received by this Board of Supervisors that the prior Board of Supervisors never would have got is 10.7 million dollar bond for decommissioning. And it's going to be reviewed every three years. So obviously inflation or as prices change. So, you know, I will credit this board and the public for bringing up decommissioning because the prior cup agreement was within 15 years a bond would be put in place. So I think that is a win for all parties that we did get decommissioning that'll help go towards. If something happens, we know there's a lot going on in federal, you know, side right now. If for some reason turbine technology changes or something happens, at least we have a bond sitting there. No matter what happens to whoever company owns it at the time to help take down. That was a big thing that I wanted because that affects all taxpayers, right? We want to make sure all taxpayers are taken care of because just because some have it, we don't want everybody to have to pay for it. The 1.2 million dollars to the county in addition to taxes. This is something that clearly was due to a strong board, strong citizens, you know, the push that the counties had. Most wind companies aren't just going to give in addition to taxes money. So I think, I think I applaud this, this board and sometimes saying no and asking questions and trying to make sure things are followed right can end up helping out our county that very desperately needs, needs the money for our, you know, employees that work here, for property taxes. I, I get it. We, we do need money in this county. And so I guess the other side, I, I do have, you know, concerns. I watch a lot of, a lot of other counties. A lot of them say it's a huge mistake when they end up getting wind turbines. You know, there's ones that have had fires and it just ruins their land. You know, there's just all sorts of issues, the health, potential hazards, people having to move and they can't sell their house. So I, I do pray for, you know, the, the land, landowners, the acreage owners, you know, even easement owners that I pray that they never have issues. I pray that, you know, their land is protected. So that's a huge, you know, concern. I'm a softie. You know, that's where my passion comes out. I want to take care of people. Even if they sign, some people say, well, that's their problem. Well, I care too, you know, it's, it's something that affects everybody. Let's see. And yeah, just that the, the land's never going to be the same. It's going to look different around here. But yeah, that's kind of where I'm at. I, I like the thought of tabling. I want to understand from them. Not, not because I don't want to do it. I think we're going to do it. Clearly, it's the path that we need to go because we have no money. It's, is there things that can be tweaked for the zoning items as well as? I 100% agree in the resolution. I think it should say the moratorium enacted on January 6, 2025 does not apply to Salt Creek Wind Project LLC or Salt Creek Wind LLC Phase Wolf Project. I think it needs to be very clear. I feel like phase two, that's a separate negotiation is my understanding. But I, I want to ensure anything outside of one and obviously two still on the table to negotiate. Anything outside of those, I want to make sure that, you know, it doesn't, the next day sign this, next year revise the phase three or phase four. Those were mentioned in the past, that Salt Creek Wind Project isn't opening the floodgates to allow all of these projects to come in across the whole county, you know, or purchase other easements around the other sides of the county. So I just, at this point, I understand my district wants it. I'm going to respect the landowners. And, you know, I think we do need to allow this to come in with a good, a good deal. I never thought I would say that, but I, if that's what people want, I think they, they should get it. I, like I said, I, I hope it, I hope it goes well. I know the county will get money and I'm going to see that we have a lot of needs this county needs. So I just think it'd be good to understand from you guys if they're willing to look at these small items that Laura brought up. And, you know, also on this current resolution to be very clear of what we're placing. Because if we release the moratorium on Salt Creek's full project, let's say the project includes other things we don't even know about. We're releasing our, our moratoriums so then they can follow the ordinances. And the whole point of updating was to make sure that anything outside of what's already been in the works. You know, I said that on the first day that I, and I, I agree with that, you know, that it's typically a moratorium should stop anything further. So I know that was long-winded, but I had a lot that I needed to get out. So.
Yeah, yeah. Might be in favor of tacking a little bit, but I just want to let my district know that with this getting worded right, I will be voting yes. Not because I agree. There's anything from the top to the bottom. Way back to El Dorado, this was a scam. There is no such thing as clean energy, especially in industrial. I just have to, I cringe every time I hear very good faith because these companies are big enough where they don't care about anybody else, but they move the money. So I have good faith for somebody that knows they're, they're going to get a bit, bit chance of losing in Supreme Court to then file four or five lawsuits on you knowing you don't have the money to pay. I mean, that's how, how corrupt is that? And corrupt is a word with this, this clean, clean energy all the way from the Biden administration down to, down to here. I had to, I kind of chuckled. I, I made a statement when my election was going on. I don't even remember the comment was, but Bob sent me one Facebook message back and says, that's not how government works. Call me if you want me. I'll tell you how it works. Well, I wish I would have. Because from day one in here, it's been nothing but lie, cheating, and, and deceit, deceived. From our last boards to the people, person that was in charge, nothing but lies and deceit. You guys talk about packing board. That's a howl. Exactly how you got your job, Bob. By lying and deceit from our last people in charge. And it worked. Congratulations. You got, you got done what you needed to do. Hope you're proud. One thing with this board, this is a transparent board. I think they all care about the county. And I guarantee you there's no lying or deceiving on this, on this deal. But as far as the last couple of boards, old board members, zoning commissioners, they got what they wanted. You got what you wanted by lying, cheating, and seeing. It's nothing about, it's all about greed. I guarantee another of these farmers getting these care about what the schools are getting or what everybody's getting. They care about their 30 grand a year or if you get 10 of these things, whatever. I fear terribly. I've read and read and read that these still are not going to be sustainable when money goes, goes gone. No matter if they're generating electricity in your house, their repairs, their replacements, they're not going to, they're not going to run. But I think this board had to make this decision because we don't have enough money to fight these big greedy companies. It's, it's plain and simple. I honestly don't think anybody on the board really truly wants these things. But they realize that it will be because of big money greed. There's no two ways about it. I never thought I'd say, I'm going to vote yes. But let's hope we can get these up and running and people can, we can maybe get some money before this all runs away because we're, hopefully, I had a conversation with, with Mr. Sash that, you know, I, I hope it does work now. I mean, because it's, they're going up. But I need to be the guy to come back in four or five years and tell you, I, I told you so. We're going to be looking at dead turbines and probably farmers crying about wanting the money from the government to take them back down. Just, I'm a lot like, hell, I just, it's right or wrong, you know? And it's sad our country is in the shape it's in. The Biden administration and the elites have stolen billions of dollars from taxpayers. This Secretary of Energy, they passed almost $60 billion after Biden lost. After he lost, before Trump got in, they passed almost $60 billion for this green energy crap. Do you think, how, how many billions of that, do you guys think is coming back to the farmers or the counties? Billions went into pocketbooks and watching DC and the elitist. It's a crying shame that we are to this point. But with this being, if you guys are comfortable, when we are comfortable with the wording, I, I will vote yes. It's not what my district wanted. And I still believe there's way more people in this county against them. But we don't have the money to fight them, and they do it. And so I really, I have to chuckle when I hear good faith because there's no good faith on the other side. I apologize to my district. But we have no money to fight them. So it's America, I guess, right now.
Oh, I got my mic. I'm sorry.
Oh.
Good. As you can tell, there's an awful lot of promotion tied with, with these things. I will tell you that the people that we negotiated with, I believe they truly acted in good faith. I pushed very, very hard to the point where it almost pushed them to the point of, we'll just litigate. And, but I think we did a really good job of coming to an agreement. They didn't have to give us 1.2 billion dollars. They could have moved forward. And we wouldn't have gotten that, we wouldn't have gotten that agreement. We still get the win in terms. I've said it before and I mentioned it in our agreements, I personally don't like the way they look. About 40, oh, no, she's 45, 45 years ago in the garage. When I was heading into the LA basin, I saw these big, cool looking things on the hill. They were in turns. I thought they were cool. I thought it was a great idea. That was a long, long time ago. I personally don't like what they do to our horizon. But this is America and we're a capitalist society. We are a constitutional republic. We're not a democracy. And I think most people do not understand how our government works and how capitalism works. True, we don't have the money to fight them. When I look at what Judge Cox said, and then when we had our discussion with our lawyers, basically, we were sitting at about 50, 50 chance of winning. Actually, I don't think it was quite that, but that was what we thought. And then every month they changed the judges and the judge that came in next was maybe supposedly going to be on our side. He upheld what Judge Cox said. And at that point, I realized we had no choice. We were going to lose no matter what. And throwing money at it to, to fight it all the way to Supreme Court made no sense to me. I mean, we're talking one to $2 million. But I do believe that the people we negotiated with did so a good thing. We got, we, we had many, many conversations and then we had to turn it over to the lawyers. So for the lawyers in the room, I have to respect you guys went to law school, you passed the bar, but you made the wording so difficult. I mean, what we agreed to before with the lawyers was really good. I believe what the lawyers wrote upheld or upholds what we agreed to. It's just, just way too many extra words in there that make it look like there are problems. I don't see any real problems with what we have before us. I really don't. And Kimberly was one of those people we were negotiating with. Originally, I said I didn't want to negotiate with her. Well, I almost started to like you. No, anyways, I, I really do. I think we negotiated well. We asked. Uh, I I really do. I think we negotiated well. We asked some really hard questions and I pushed up against the wall. And um. I think we got it done and um, I I'm gonna go yes. Good, uh, we, okay, I can't hear what you got to say on all the other stuff, okay.
Okay, so my comments are going to be reflective of uh, the questions that were brought up. Uh, one. Um, the objections, none of these that have been brought up today are anything that we hadn't considered. Before going into negotiations, uh, the questions of um, that Lauren had put out there. None of those have been, all of them have been addressed. There's nothing that she's raised that hasn't already been thought of and sent through our attorneys. And secondly. I'll I'll expand on a couple of them. One, that it isn't, um, inclusive of Salt Creek one. Um, specific language, however, it does say that this is limited to sixty-one. Uh, conditional use permits. If you're going to expand the project, you're going to have more than sixty-one conditional use permits. So that eliminates any um, future, in a matter of fact, some of the language that we asked for. That um, state that it doesn't, if you, it it applies to any future projects would have to go through the proper. Certificates and and uh, application process. As the moratorium is also in place, we could have avoided some of this by simply adding the language. Uh, when they first asked that uh, this doesn't apply to them. Um, that's what we're doing now and uh, for three hundred thousand dollars later, that was a big, that was an expensive question. I have to answer to. Um, additionally, the decommissioning bond, uh, we had heard from many. People who are concerned that that was the issue, the decommissioning bond, we're able to address that through this negotiation process. There was a lot of disinformation, misinformation that was being passed around about decommissioning bonds. And that has been addressed. Not only that, we have an agreement that every three years that's going to be updated. There's going to be a new estimate. From a uh, according to our ordinance, the um, the P E. Has to be certified, disinterested third party to give how much it's going to cost to decommission the project. And that money will be on file, um, and updated every three years, which I think is pretty reasonable. We asked for between three and five and they agreed to three, and so I thought that that was, that that was a pretty generous offer. Uh, next, let's see. That the project doesn't include Next Era, Next Era is the overarching company and Salt Creek Wind Project. Um, more sixty-one turbine sites in in uh, Tamek County is they're. Under their ownership as a subsidiary and so it doesn't specific, their their company specifically is Salt Creek Wind. Uh, LLC and so that's why the agreement is with them. We do understand that. Um, Salt Creek Wind two is owned by a different company and so this agreement doesn't have anything to do um, with Next Era. All of the things for Salt Creek two have to go through a different process. Um, additionally, Diane Laura stands on uh, a future that there's nothing in here that ties her hands, the only thing that. We are asking, uh, or yeah, I'll give a clarification. Then her main concern was um. The establishment of use and the extensions. So the establishment of use, there's no defined or nowhere in. Our ordinances or in state code that defines what establishment of use is. So we can define what establishment of use is. That's what we've done with this agreement. Establishment of use. We have conceded that that when they erect one turbine, that that constitutes establishment of use. This board has the authority to do that. Once establishment of use has been reached, there can be no denial or there will be no. No need for extensions as the project is underway. Uh, it's already well underway. The other concern, um, on the LIDAR tower. Um. I I presented that uh, to the negotiators, says, talked about the the LIDAR. We double checked and the entire boundary of the project is covered under the existing cup. This includes the parcel that we are proposing, the light are on. Um, so even outside of it not meeting the uh, hundred twenty foot structure. Um, it is within the footprint, in the boundary of the conditional use permit that has been granted. As such, there's no need for any change in zoning for that parcel since it is. Since the use is already granted by the cup. I think there's a belief within certain factions that only the parcels that we submitted, the sixty-one zoning certificates for are covered by the. Uh, by the change in use under the cup. That's not accurate. All of the boundary in the cup has the uh, new use applied for, therefore we don't. Need to rezone the light on parcel and by not doing so, there's no allegation for spot zoning, which is illegal. Um, further, um, the road use agreement, uh, we put stuff in the road use agreement, certainly. There has been one that has been signed. They will uphold that. There's never been any concern, any other the communities that I have. I've understood where winter bikes have gone in, where the roads are in worse condition when they leave than when they, before they come. They go through, they have to video it, uh, they took video of all the roads. Before they come in and then they'll take a video before they leave. The engineer has to sign off on it, the supervisors and the and the engineer. Guy engineer will make sure that the roads are in better condition. They've offered to give references for all other communities that they've been in. Where they left the roads and off their condition, read newspaper articles. Uh, in particular, just the ones to the west here, the Gino Wind Project, whenever you go and read something, uh, we were actually looking at their. The way that they were taxing their winter bikes. I went, come across an article that gave praise to Mid-American for the way that they left the. Roads after that, after the winter bikes had gone in, so there's, it's not, there's no precedent. Um, and if there's uh, a need for references, we could, we could simply ask for them. But we also have some assurance because it's in writing that they're going to, it's documented what the roads look like before they came in. It's going to be documented what the roads look like when they leave. And so that's, that's not, not a typical, I guess, objection that people are raising. At the, at the uh, end of these, but definitely going into. vested rights, um, there's been a lot of talk about the vested rights. We're not, uh. All we're doing is acknowledging that the the judges, essentially, that they're likely to have vested rights if they continue to move forward. We continue to move forward on the litigation. Um. Our attorney's comments, um, after considering all of these objections. Uh, the legal ramifications. He said, ultimately, it's a political decision. Although I believe some of their requests may have legal flaws, the greater, the greater risk is for them than you. I definitely want them to sign off on the settlement before you pass the resolution. I have that extra. I've done everything that the attorney has asked us to do. There are no more legal ramifications that he feels are in line with the gap. Therefore, um, I think it's consistent, all of the things that have been raised uh, by Laura have also been raised. Uh, prior to by David and I and uh, by Heather can submitted several things that I think that we were able to get. One of them was uh, the entrance and the exit from the Good Neighbor Agreement. There's some people who oppose the project on principle and would like to be released. From their Good Neighbor Agreement that was allowed um, by by our negotiations. So long as it doesn't um, disrupt the project. Secondly, people who want in, uh, that weren't included in the original, they're going to also. Um, allow that to happen. And so I don't know what, what else to address with the negotiation. Think that it's a good, a good negotiation. I think that I would go back even further from, from Heather and and Kurt's comments. The state of Iowa, a long time ago, uh, initiated and. Going all the way back to the federal government, initiated tax credits and said that this is a good source of energy. So the laws of the legislature have been written to favor free and wind and solar and. Judges have been appointed with those things in mind, with the way that the laws are written. So we're not only talking about passports and and uh. The ordinances that we have here in our county, we're talking about federal and and state law, that would all have to be changed and we were. If if the position of no winter bikes anywhere in our county was a reasonable position, it would be a major overhaul. Of the, of the code that is, has been instituted by the state and by the federal government. And there's agendas that are put in place that are going to uphold the law. And so those are my comments. I, I think that I've covered everything. If there's anything. Uh, not, I think the most uh, significant one was that this only applied to phase one. Uh, it's only sixty-one turbine, uh, for the, in in Salt Creek two would be a completely different negotiation.
I'll take it, okay. Uh. I do feel, I mean, they they did a decent job negotiating, so I mean, I'm. I think you probably should vote on it today, just to get a poll. I did the drift, but uh, one thing Mark did say that. He he likes to point back to the politicians stuff, but we all know how politicians are too.
Yep.
He said that judges got put in place for good reasons, he said, but I think they got put in place for bad things. Um, you got the money, the federal government is corrupt. Um. It's heartbeat good, so we're supposed to pay district judges. All over the country, so I do agree with how you guys did it. They did great, but I wouldn't. Praise our lawmakers by any stretch of the imagination.
Alright, of course I got some more items as everybody's talking, so um, just a a mention, I've said this before, but the. The roads, if you're in Salt Creek Wind Project, they will take care of the roads, Salt Creek Wind will. Um, Ben or myself have the Next Era contact now. Um, that's a week ago I got the contact, so if there's any road issues, just let us know. And it seems to be getting taken care of pretty quickly, um, so that's a good thing. Um, I did try in the concessions uh, to get items for acreowners that. Um, if the property value goes down, you know, that they can get ten percent or some kind of arbitrary percent if it goes below. Um, that, so I I did try for acreowners. I understand a lot of them didn't know until after the project was already approved. Which is very disappointing. I know that they, uh, there is some people that they're gonna have to move there, you know, if they already have some health issues. Those are the people I'm really concerned about because these turbines with Shava Clicker and others can um, make it worse. So I did try for that as well. That was um, a no, uh, because it's it's hard to put a number on it. But I I do think if you have concerns, reach out to the company once they're built, um. I also tried to get ADLS, that's the Aircraft Detection Lighting System. So phase one, sixty turbines, one substation. What that means is there's going to be sixty red lights. They decided not to. Not to um, go with the ADLS. It wasn't cost financial right now, since they're, if the tower's ordered and everything, so. Unfortunately, everyone, which it affects the whole county, right? I mean, everybody can see Gladbrooks from Dizert and. You're gonna see sixty wind turbines. If phase two goes in, it's gonna be another twenty-seven, around five hundred foot tall, I think roughly. Is what these are, so um, I did try for that. I was very strong because that affects everybody, you know. Nobody wants to feel like they're living at an airport, right? Everybody wants to have nighttime where it looks, looks, um. I guess normal black sky, so um, that is something I would, I would ask and we have. Legislature in Salt Creek Next Era, you know, at some point, if it could be a possibility, I did the same thing. With the Vienna Wind Project when they repowered, I just simply asked, hey, could we get this? And they said yes, and they are gonna, so the Vienna Wind Project in Gladbrook will be ADLS compliant by the end of the year, so. We will have twenty less flashing lights in the Gladbrook area. Um, I would just continue to encourage. Um, the Next Era team to look into that of what it would would cost or is there some kind of grant or subsidies to do that at some point? Just to help everyone, whether they signed up or not, that have to live around it. Last thing, I'd like an updated project schedule. Hey, Kimberly, I sent an email the weekend. I'd like to understand, you know, being we're working together now. What's an updated project schedule? The one from December shows that we're rebuilding turbines until next July. But I think that's, my understanding is that's moved up and it's now this year's, the comments I've been hearing. I'd like to really know so we can be open and transparent with the public if what is our timeline look like, you know, it's it's clearly gonna be likely this year. We'll stretch it, so next year, um, Highway sixty-three is gonna be completely tore out and redone between Toledo and. Ninety-six sixty-three intersection next year, so I'm getting all the phone calls of the roads and next year I'll get both going on. It's still going on, so uh, any communication, I guess, you know, if we're moving forward, let's, let's not withhold information. Let's work together and let's make sure that uh, the public knows what's going on. So we like to be transparent and we need to make sure people understand so they know what's coming.
But I just wanted to thank you guys for everything you've done and that's, I know you've spent a lot of time doing it. Um, and it's a lot of mixed feelings. I mean, I have, you have, everybody has. I just, if we had the money, we'd be sitting in their spot, you know, like I said before, we just don't have it laying around. Uh, as far as. You know, in my district, I don't, a lot of my people don't talk about it a lot. But it's, it still affects everybody, um. But like you said, I just want to thank you, Mark and David for all the time you, excuse me, time you put in to do this. And I feel like we're set pretty good on this negotiation paperwork here. Um, there are some questions, but I I feel a lot better after we've talked through this and where we're at with it. And I sure do agree with Kurt that it comes from way above, not just here.
Okay, um, just to address one, one other thing that had to come up, um, Kurt had uh, mentioned. I wasn't saying that I was for it, I was saying that it's, that's what it is. That's the culture that we live in and to undo everything, it would take a major, a measure act. And so, um, but I think that the current administration is trying to address some of that, however, is uh, not going too quickly and so. So just, just to make, uh, I guess the state of being and recognizing what is instead of like giving an endorsement of it. I don't think that there are any other comments that were brought up, um, all of us have had our opportunity to speak. Um, this does, the motion that is on the table. Does include the resolution and so we can pass this. Um, and we can't pass one without passing all four. It doesn't work that way. I think that um, delaying a vote. Um, risks us losing the deal that we have. I don't, I don't think that that's appropriate at this time, so I'd like an up or down vote. But we need to do um, a roll call because there's a resolution, this is part of it and a yes vote. Um, or I would, I was going to indicate your support for the settlement agreement, for the resolution. For exhibit B and create to the C, is that correct? Uh, and I think that's okay, A, B, C, and D, and then the settlement agreement, so. And so everybody's there, any questions on the procedure? I guess now would be a time to call the question. David calls the question, which is a motion to uh, stop debate and to vote. Is there a second to do that?
A second.
Other seconds, it has to pass by two hundred majority and so. All in favor of stopping the debate, so yeah, I mean.
Okay.
Moves, the motion carries and then we'll vote on the, on the question and then we'll do the roll.
We get a second for the motion that we will call?
Heather did.
Heather did some. Oh, I did the, the debate motion, I guess. But he had the original motion and.
The motion is from the committee, which is two people.
Oh, so you guys, motion second, okay.
Essentially, the committee moves, which is two people, that doesn't require a second.
Alright, so Turner?
Hi.
Okay.
Bye.
Doan?
Bye.
Noble?
Hi.
And Norman?
I'm here.
The motion passes, all four. Items on the agenda, um. That have been asked and agreed to will pass. The last, there's a second, the last thing on our agenda, um, is that we would discuss a proposal that was put forward. By Senator Fletchitz. I don't, I wanted to. Wait. To have an approval on this until I had some more answers, but I did hand out to everybody a copy of what the proposal looks like. Um. Can't find me my own stack here, sorry. Can you just imagine? Can't find me in my own stack here, sorry. Can you just imagine?
Is it just a mirror?
Yeah. Essentially, um Center Associates has pulled out of Tama County and is only offering services in Marshall County. Some of the things that are inhibiting them are their building space uh was falling apart, they said. As well as staffing changes, I can just bring just the outset. Tama County, Iowa is a rural county with significant barriers to mental health and behavioral health care, including providing shortages, high rates of mental health needs and challenges related to access and affordability. This proposal outlines a plan to expand outpatient mental health services for all county residents with a focus on the underserved populations. The clinic will offer individual and group therapy, crisis intervention, case management, and community education supported by flexible staffing model that and a transparent budget that accommodates staffing from a quarter to three quarters full-time employees. Um, there's some stats, but I wanna get down to their budget proposals. Budget proposal for a licensed mental health professional for seventy thousand dollars. For full-time, full-time, and it goes all the way down to a quarter time for a licensed mental health professional. A support staff of eighteen thousand dollars uh for DM costs. Annual cost of twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh reimbursement for no show than like cancellations for lost revenue is five thousand dollars. Rent for space for annual rent was fifteen thousand dollars and for internet technology was twenty-four hundred at the, the high end of it, as well as seven thousand dollars for other operating expenses. For a full-time scenario, or a three-quarter time scenario would be hundred-two thousand dollars. One hundred-two thousand, four hundred dollars. Uh halftime would be eighty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars. And quarter time is sixty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars. Um, the implementation of the timeline, the month one and two, to secure clinic space, hire staff, and establish partnerships. Month grade four would be develop policies, procedures, and marketing materials. Month five, look at clinic and begin accepting clients. Ongoing this monitor, monitor service utilization, collect feedback, and adjust programming as needed. The program's success would be measured by number of clients served, um, which we would be asking for. Client satisfaction survey, the reduction in no-show rates, uh community outreach participation, and timely access to care. So essentially, uh I, I sent back to their um CEO, uh Paul Daniel, and asked, would this be a one-time request or is this going to be ongoing every year? And his response back to me was, because the ball is moving so quickly, we don't know. They would like to think that it's a one-time uh payment, however, it's probably going to be a recurring cost. And so um, I think that by them uh submitting, I guess, the proposal that's worthy of consideration, however, I think that other providers have stepped up uh and have not asked any, for any additional uh funding. They matter of fact, when uh they've been part of this community, Center Associates has been the mental health provider in this community for a long time, and we had no formal uh notification that they were pulling out. We got word from that from a resident that had um had received services from them. And so that was uh, and actually Michelle was the one that conveyed that to me. And so I would be hesitant to move forward with any kind of, of agreement in, in this uh manner. I think that we definitely need the mental health services, but we're uh partnering with Prairie Ridge and is doing a wonderful job. There's uh adding services and I've even just reached out to them last week and had a meeting with their CEO about adding additional services. And, and so they're moving the ball forward. They've not asked for any additional funding from us at this point. And so I guess I'd just be a little bit hesitant. Um, but would open it up for other discussion from other, other folks' opinions, if you have any opinion on it.
I agree. We've already got Prairie Ridge working on uh mental health. I think the state's pulling too much of it up. It's to the state district levels, and I think we have a great need here in our, in our county for this. I agree. If we're getting good service from the people we already have and they're doing adequate or more than adequate, I, I don't see us throwing money to these. And these are the people who have the, the office over there already, and they, and they left. And they're now asking for us for more money. They didn't tell us they were leaving. I'm, I'm good, Dave. Yeah. So I, I would say it's nice they put this here. But I think we need to wait um and see how the folks who are actually providing services right now, how well that works for. Everybody else have any comments on it?
If not, um. If you'd like to see it on the agenda for approval, uh, we'll, we'll do that. But I just wanted a discussion so I can kinda get it out there. I want, I told him I'd at least, we'd at least uh consider him looking at it and uh so I can give him an answer back. But if we're ready to vote on it at some point, uh, if there's a consensus that we need to do that, we'll do that in the near future.
Do you, do you think that we need even, I mean, say them, but do you think it's a viable option? With what we've already got in place?
There, there are some other known factors that I know, but are kind of proprietary information that I would wanna disclose to the public. Um, that would give me pause.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I agree. David? We should just probably just wait.
And just keep us, keep us updated. You're, you're the mental health guy. You know our needs and what we need and just keep us updated.
We would love to have them, but the extra, you know, what we're getting from somebody else without contributing any more money is
Right.
we'll see what, if that works. And, and if we're getting a lot of, a lot of concerns and uh from the public, then maybe we look at it again. I haven't been getting this.
Okay. Okay. Um. It is.
We have total for this week, a lot less than the last two weeks. Uh, one, six, zero, comma, seven, seven, five, period, four, zero. Hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred, seventy-five dollars and forty cents. And the biggest item on here was a hundred and four thousand, seven hundred, forty dollars for two new patrol cars for the sheriff. That would have been like fifty-four thousand. So. I think the motion that we approve, the, the claims for a hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred, seventy-five dollars and forty cents.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and Kupka's taken this discussion. All of us are big say aye. Votes. Motion carries. Uh, open up some public comments at the end of anybody who's to speak after.
Yeah.
Laura Wilson would like to speak if she can get connected. She was having some connection to other like she did, I've been like she was like said.
Okay.
Laura, Kim? Because uh someone out while Mark was discussing the, my, our parcel they chose was never included in any public hearing notices for the cup and details of the structure were never discussed as possibly during the cup presentation in twenty-twenty. This being within the boundary of the project does not grant them approval. As the vote during the cup hearing was only to approve sixty turbine locations. Substation and meteorological towers were not included in the vote approval. So I still disagree and feel this needs to be specified as an exemption variance. Also, my comment on the moratorium was that the settlement specified, but the resolution did not, that the moratorium exemption was only for phase one.
Okay. Anybody else? Here.
Um. So I am grateful to Kurt Helmer for giving the public the political history with names of how we got to where we are right now because Heather's correct, there is going to be a lot of comments as the visuals take place in the near future, um, six months to a year. And people are going to wonder that have never spoken up before why this happened, how it got passed, who is to blame? Why we didn't get it stopped? Why we didn't have it under control? All those things are gonna come forward. We've been told a few times in here now that the public is afraid to speak up. Well, that works on both sides. Um, there's an awful lot of silent majority of people who don't want this stuff, but they thought that we were ahead of it and going to get it stopped. So um, those of us who kind of follow the political stuff know why we're sitting where we are. We know that our federal government has not been favorable to us, including our state government, including our state governor, who could have stopped a lot of this in the last two months. So, and the judges, so, so people who have been here every single week or almost every week know why we are where we are. You know the names, and I'm just so grateful to Kurt for sticking in here for all these years against all the opposition, against all the hate that was flung at him and for bringing to light today the history of how we got to where we are. Because it's gonna be important because now when people ask, we can say, well, go back to the meeting on this date and listen and watch. If you've never ever done that before, that's on you. If you've not ever commented before or offered funding before, that's on you. So, thank you. Um, Heather and Kurt, it's Heather, I don't agree with you that your district wants it, but the majority. But the minority want it in your district, that is for sure.
Yep.
Yep, yep. So not, not all of your district.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that they wanted it, but just vote there. I would say it's both sides. I'd say some do, some don't. It's not.
It'll be clearer now who does and who doesn't. And the, I, I, as a farmer, I've been outside all my life. I mean, I don't even know when I wasn't outside at night. And I like to see the stars. And I don't like to see shafts going round and round and round, round. So um, it's going to be a huge change, life-changing event, even if they break and they're just standing there. It's going to be huge. Um, so thank you board for working on this. Thank you for all of you being opposed to it, but having to do what you have to do. Thank you for um the transparency of how we got to where we are. And um, there'll be a lot of other issues coming up. The, I want the public to know this is for sure, not a done deal. Uh, there's going to be a lot coming up coming forward, going forward. It's just, it's just such a huge thing. But I am grateful for what you've done. And I don't agree with Kurt Kupka. I do think that this is going to be a fight in your land also, if you're still on the supervisor board. This is going to come to you with either phase three or eminent domain. It's not for sure. This is so huge. But we're doing what we can and we've done what we can. Thank you very much. And I appreciate all the comments you have to make.
Good. Thank you. Vince? Ben, ready?
Earlier when I spoke, I didn't tell any of you about the vote. I had a feeling you were gonna pass this. But basically I was trying to say, you gotta dot your i's and cross your j's to make sure down the road, things don't come back to bite you. And, you know, I appreciate all you guys' hard work. But I live in Kurt's district up there. I know what the majority of the people in this county feel. We don't want them. But when you have big company come in, just start throwing money at lawyers, you can't fight them. And that's a tough reality to suck up. I've been at these meetings for three and a half years. And to realize that we just gotta give in to people that throw money at a solution to get what they want. I don't appreciate it. You know, and uh but I thank you for all your time and effort. And you're gonna have less of a crowd here in the future. Thank you. So, thanks.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
I still see you on Sunday morning.
Yeah.
There you go. Anybody else? Uh, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Just a comment, wouldn't you think? You know, the most important thing in this county is the pedal, okay? And I just don't understand why people would wanna move to a county that has hundreds of turbines or thousands of acres of solar fields. What is so attractive about that? What would attract a young family, new kids to move to this county with all of that in this town? Yes, we might have better gravel roads. We might have some nicer visions towards schools or toward downtown areas. But if you really think about it, what, what would be so attractive to have a young family from the surrounding counties move into this county to set up shop if it's surrounded with turbines and solar fields to the rural areas? We're gonna lose these rural acreages. They're gonna get plowed under. And that would be such a travesty because to me, I'm a country gal. I grew up in a farming deep county. It's one of the best places to reach your kids, your family, one of the best places for your grandkids to come to. And we are going to be losing that if we continue with heavy industrial wind and solar. Now, I think that there is appropriate use for solar and within this county, but not on an industrial scale. There are good uses for it in this town, but where this county is directed, how in the hell are you gonna get people to populate this county? How are we gonna get these young families to move to this county that hopefully they're our down, visit our downtown, our businesses? Nobody is gonna wanna mess around these things. My feeling, the zoning board, when they get the time to update that wind ordinance, two things. If somebody wants to put a turbine on their property, it has to be on, on occupied, like, a, a farmhouse, preferably the landlord's home. Secondly, they put that turbine on fifteen hundred feet from their home, not mine. To me, that is just and that is fair. They want the turbine? Fine, I can't stop you. They want the money? Fine. But you put that thing fifteen hundred feet up from your house so that you can experience the full effect of that, of what that turbine has to offer. Not your neighbor. So I will be at those zoning ordinances when they update that wind ordinance. He goes to me, you want the turbine? Great, fine. You want the money? Great, fine. But you need to deal with the full effects of what those turbines have. And I suspect that there would be a lot of farmers' wives and mothers who would change their fate.
Okay. Thank you.
Um. Some more question and anything? Um. Do we need to get on the agenda or do I, somebody needs to get on the agenda to start working on the solar and, and the wind ordinance?
Uh, because we have a moratorium in place, I think that that's already on the regard.
Oh, okay. All right.
It is. Yeah, I think the solar public hearing of their draft version is Wednesday night. Is it six o'clock here? And then here at six o'clock Wednesday is their draft version of that, is my understanding in there. Then they're starting the wind ordinance unless they change their line. That's what I've heard.
They're going to have to include nuclear and uh natural gas. So those have been going up.
Yep, and repowering and battery stor- storage. There's a lot of work for them to do.
Okay. Anybody else? More to chair? Before news?
Yeah. By the way, we, we were gonna ax your cars 'cause you didn't tell us.
I got new cars.
Congratulations.
Play showed up afterwards.
Three for a baby, you know? On behalf of myself and the rest of the board, we thank you all for your comments and all of the due diligence for the last several years and hopefully that this creates a new path forward. I think that we're trying to work in a reasonable manner. Um I think that the board's vote today reflects that, um that we're we're not, not as uh litigious and we don't wanna end up in court again and all those kind of things. So I hope that that message has been clear. Um many of the comments that you make about future, um definitely take up with the zoning board. Um and whatever we've been doing in this county hasn't been working because we've had declining uh population for several years now. And uh so the good question, that's a good question. We're working on an economic development solution. Um as we speak, uh we've been reaching out and to try and figure out what we can do to make that better. And so I think that's all the, all the business we have to deal with. Unless there's something else that I missed, bring it up now. If not, we'll be adjourned.